The first thing in our agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing held by the local Metro Art Pollution Control Board is called to order and has been held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulation. Notice of the hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing has been held by video teleconference. Instructions on making written or statements by video teleconference have been distributed. Four statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become a part of the hearing record. There is one agreed board order to be reviewed today. Would the staff please present the first agreed board order with Swift Pork Company?
Board members, the district brings for the board's consideration an agreement with Swift Pork Company, which operates a pork processing plant on Story Avenue and is subject to a district-issued be due permit. The district alleges that Swift caused objectionable odors in the areas surrounding their facility and failed to monitor and report operational parameters for process and odor control equipment. During 2019, 2020, and 2021, the district received numerous complaints from the public regarding objectionable odors from Swift. District compliance staff observed strong odors on 12 days during those years. The district issued three notices of violation for these observed odors. In spring of 2019, the district responded to an odor complaint and a report from the company that they were having challenges with some of their equipment. District staff requested records for review and determined that some equipment was operating outside of permitted ranges. Additional review of Swift's annual permit report for 2018 showed additional noncompliance with monitoring and record-keeping requirements. The company submitted their annual report for 2019 in February of 2020, which showed an improvement over the previous year, but still included some monitoring and record-keeping, or missing monitoring and record-keeping for odor-related permit conditions. The district issued two notices of violation for these noncompliance issues. The district continues to respond to odor complaints in the area around Swift, performs inspections at the facility, and reviews reports as they are submitted. The district provided a 30-day public comment period for this proposed agreed board order from July 31st to August 30th, 2023, and received 15 comments. A response to comment document has been prepared and was provided to board members. The response to comment document is also available on our website. The company has agreed to pay a penalty of $44,250 to resolve this notice of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the order as written.
Thank you. Mrs. King has a representative of Swift Pork Company registered to make a statement this morning.
Yes, Chairman.
Good morning, board. My name is Gregory Dutton. I'm a lawyer with Frost, Brown, Todd, and I'm here on behalf of Swift Pork Co. Swift Pork Company appreciates the district's attention to this matter and their cooperation in resolving these issues. As a company, they look forward to many more years of partnering with the community to produce high-quality food products and to provide living wage jobs. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you. Mrs. King, has any member of the public registered to make a statement this morning?
We had an attendee email that they wish to make a statement. I'm unclear if that is during this public hearing or during board meeting to follow. So if anyone on the meeting would like to make a statement during this public hearing, they could use the raise hand function. We will promote them. Raise hand function is on the bottom of the WebEx screen.
Greg's hand was raised, so I promoted him to a panelist.
Thank you. Greg, you can make your statement now. You will need to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. Just want to very be, very brief. It's about cars idling and especially city vehicles. I've seen them at numerous occasions, and like the last one at the Cyclovia on Goss Avenue, there were several large city dump trucks, garbage-type trucks, sitting with their idling, windows rolled up, air conditioner on, the driver just sitting there scrolling on the cellphones. I knocked on two of them to ask them if they could please cut the engines off. I got laughed at by one and just ignored by the other one. So I'd like to just make, see if there's a way to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Greg Zeron.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll make sure to note that comment towards our board for the general open public comment portion of the board meeting. If it was not related to the Swift, agreed board order, that is the subject of this hearing.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Has any member of the public submitted a written statement?
Yes, sir.
Are there any members in the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a statement or comment? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on the video teleconference? Please raise your hand by video teleconference, and you will be called upon. This is a feature you can find on the participant list of our press and start the reading. Joining my phone, and you will be called upon.
I see no raised hands.
No, okay, thank you. Ms. King, does anyone wish to speak?
I think we have no other speakers.
No one's speaking, thank you. This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. Next thing on the agenda is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business for the day. No new business.
You skipped some sections. Go call somebody.
Oh, maybe someone. Oh, call the board, yeah. Yeah, Greg, that's okay. Power to order, recognition of the court.
We have a court.
Okay. Are there any introductions this morning?
No, Chairman Heldon.
Any public recognitions this morning?
Not this morning.
Approval amendments, public hearing and regular meeting held on August 16, 2023, were submitted at Charlie. Are there any comments, upgrades to the public hearing and regular meeting minutes?
Upper name.
Here or not, the minutes stand approved. I will now conduct a roll call of board members that are present on this teleconference. Steve Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Colbert.
Here.
Dr. May, she's absent. Candace White.
Here.
Thank you. Marissa Neal.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Daniel Gars. The minutes of the public hearing and regular meetings, so those minutes have been approved. Mrs. King, has anyone registered to make a comment this morning?
No, other than the public comment, it was already entered into the record during the public hearing.
Has anyone provided written comments for the meeting this morning?
None.
Okay. Are there any members of the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a comment?
I see no raised hands.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video conference? Please raise your hand by video teleconference, and you will be called upon. This is a feature that you can find on the participant list or by pressing star three. If joining my phone, and you will be called upon.
I see no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. Now we to unfinished business. No unfinished business. Oh. I apologize, I've got, I've made contact with the thing that they all out of sync, sorry. First thing on the new business, we have the proposed agreed board order, number 301 with Swift Pork Company. The district has recommended that the board adopt the agreed board order with Swift Pork Company. Is there a motion to adopt the agreed board order with Swift Pork Company?
So moved.
Thank you. Got seconded?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the agreed board order with Swift Pork Company?
I have a questioner.
Yes.
One, I assume it addresses all five of them.
It does.
And then I noticed that it's a reduction in reassessed amount from 59,000 to 44,000. That's just negotiated.
It's the 25% we offer per settlement.
Thank you. Okay, I will now take a roll call vote. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the agreed board order with Swift Pork Company, and no if you do not. Steve Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Colbert.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. May is absent. Candace White.
Yes.
Thank you. Marissa Neal.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Daniel Gars is absent, okay. And myself, Call Heldon, yes. Their agreed board order with Swift Pork Company is approved as submitted. Thank you very much. Now we at the committee reports. No committee met during the last month. Staff report, Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you very much, Chairman Heldon. Well, good morning, everyone. For those of you who are in the Edison Room and those of you online, you may be able to see a glimpse of a very large mural that's been added here in the Edison Center. Billy, if you would stand up and say something.
Do you have the audience attention here, the mural?
It's huge. It's actually nine feet by 12 feet, and it really adds a lot to this room. It's an incredibly interesting picture. I hope that we'll see a lot of folks coming in and taking a look at it. It's got a lot, lot going on. So with that good news, I'm afraid that last month I introduced the board to our newest compliance officer, Alex O'Brien, and following the recent retirement of our three other officers in this section, our only compliance officer as of September 1st, that he tendered his resignation effective September 8th and has left for greater pastures with higher pay. You may recall that for our union staff, and these are union positions, their assessment through the compensation study is still pending. It's pending negotiation of their union contract, which has been delayed. They will be worked in as Metro can get to them. However, for us, these are critical positions. They will have their pay adjusted. They're a great entry-level position for folks coming out of school with a degree in the natural sciences. We really hope to see some real well-qualified candidates coming through. We are conducting interviews. We've got a few. And again, we have four positions to fill. So we know of people who are interested in starting a career in environmental regulation. We really invite them to apply. They can do that through Metro's career page. We're also advertising for a enforcement and compliance coordinator and a full-time executive administrator. We have a wealth of riches with that executive administrator position. We've seen over, I think, are we up to 60? 60 candidates for the executive administrator position. So we're working through those and will be interviewing soon. I think that working with my colleagues here at the district is true privilege. This is an amazing group of environmental professionals, and I really hope that we find some good candidates or get them started on a great career. As I reported to the board last U.S. EPA, region four leadership was coming in for our annual in-person visit. This is a required element under the Clean Air Act. It's rather quaint, but under cooperative federalism where EPA sets the standards and state and locals develop the plans to meet those standards. Congress in 1970 thought it would be a good idea if we sat down together in the same room at least once a year. We do that much more frequently than that. We meet in person at numerous regional and national conferences, and we are on the phone with folks at EPA on a variety of different issues, probably three or four times a week. So we have a really good relationship. They have some new leadership, both from some retirements and from some promotions. So it was good to see them move into new places and to kind of get the lay of the land, to have that work chart in hand and know who we need to call now. But the cabinet also attended, and it keeps bringing their supervisors and managers. They also brought along their brand-new staff. It's really great to see them as well. It's a productive meeting. Not only did we cover, you know, matters related to our state implementation plan, but everything from air monitoring through new emerging contaminants and just a wide variety of work. On Saturday, September 30th, the West Jefferson County Community Task Force in Kentucky NAACP, NAACP, will be holding the seventh annual, I'm sure I keep myself in order here, Carl, Environmental Justice Conference titled Solutions and Outcomes. This will be held at the University Club at the University of Louisville. It is an in-person conference only and runs from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and includes, includes local and national speakers on topics of critical environmental importance. The district is very pleased to have been included in the conference and will be presenting, attending, and sharing our work throughout the day. Tickets for the event can be found on the West Jefferson County Community Task Force's Facebook page. In the time since Alex was hired on July 31st and today, the district has received more than 700 reports of odors from MSD's operations and the combined sewer system. Given our current staffing situation, the supervisor for the Community Compliance Section, Kyle Zimmerman, and district engineering staff from other areas will prioritize responding to complaints for dust and open burning because these impact air quality by adding particulate matter and ozone precursors to the ambient air and responding to odor complaints with priority for those that are not related to MSD sewer odors. We will continue to refer all sewer odor-related complaints to MSD for their follow-up and investigation. Of those more than 700 reports, some come to the district through calls or emails directly. A few are referred back to us from the Kentucky Division for Air Quality and even the Emergency Response Branch, when residents here in Louisville reach out to them for help. However, most come through the Smell My City app. That's an app that the Environment Institute introduced here in Louisville. I think it was formally introduced about 2018. Since then, the Smell My City app has become one of the most-used methods for reporting odors to the district and MSD. These reports come directly to a group of district staff, including me. We read them and respond. They also go directly to a group of MSD staff members. Once reported via the app, Smell My City reports come directly into the district as an email in real time, and they include the date, time, and location of the odor, a reporter-based rating of 1 through 5, an opportunity to describe the smell, and a description of symptoms, if any, that the observer may be experiencing. There's also a space for additional information, and many reporters take that opportunity to share that information. Since I left the office last night at 6:00, the district has received 34 reports of odors through Smell My City. And here's a sample. To keep things in perspective, the 1 through 5 that the Smell My City report uses is "The air smells fine right now" is a 1, all the way up to 5 being the worst odor, and it's almost unbearable. And there is a visualization map associated with the Smell My City app. You can pop it open, and there are four other locations across the country who receive these reports in real time from the app. Pittsburgh Health Department, Louisville, and you can check Louisville. And the map will, you can see where these reports are made, and you can also see what the reporters say. Because these are an opportunity for people to describe an odor, you'll see a wide variety of descriptions. Here's some from this morning. Rotten eggs, chemicals, bad sewage. This observer reported headaches, nausea, and asthmatic reaction. They also wanted to say that the smell is so bad that it's made its way into my home, and there's no escaping it. It's also in the downtown area, as I can also smell it in the library that I work in as well. Another reporter, mind you, there are no limits on what you can put in here. Simply said that it smells like straight-up blank SS. Raw sewage and nausea here, a yearly issue getting worse. It smells like farts or poops, and they have a headache. They also wanted to say that the smell has been in their neighborhood off and on for years, but as of late, it seems like it's gotten worse. It smells like raw sewage or rotted eggs, at times headache and sore throat. It's really bad at night, especially when you're trying to sleep, and the smell comes in the house. Don't know if it's a gas leak at times, but a raw sewage smell. It smells like human waste. My nose hurts, I feel nauseated, and can't sleep at night because of it. Additionally, please help, it's so bad. Overwhelming preseason rotten egg smell. Woke up in a coughing fit, threw up. Called MSD yet again to report the issue, which is likely a biohazard. Smells like sulk. Normally, it's only outside. Just woke up, and it's in my house too. Rotten eggs and sewage, eyes burning and nose running. What are we paying MSD for? It seems like they take more money to cause us more problems. It makes no blank, blank sense. In preparing for today's board meeting, and I read all this on a daily basis so that folks understand that at ABCD we take these reports seriously. The board required in its agreed board order that MSD provide a publicly available and user-friendly complaint and a corresponding response resolution log on its website and update it monthly. And as I said in preparing for today's meeting, I went out and looked at MSD's August monthly report. There, MSD reported 76 customer service odor complaints for the month. Of those, no odor or other issue was found for 17 of those reports, roughly 22%. Of the remaining 59 complaints, MSD watered down manholes, deodorized catch basins, flushed some veins, for roughly 60% of those within one to two days, and that's logable. And I'm sure that the folks who received some relief from those actions are grateful. However, for the remaining roughly 40%, MSD's average response time was 10 days. During that same timeframe, the district received more than 300 Smell My City reports, and not all of those are related to MSD. Most are. So we will be reaching out to MSD to learn more about how they respond to reports of sewer odors made through the Smell My City app, and will provide that information to the board at next month's meeting. Are there any questions about my report? On July 25th, EPA announced proposed updates to the federal air emissions reporting requirements and opened a public comment period for written comments through October 18th, 2023. So still in that public comment period? Fundamentally, an emissions inventory is a database that lists by source the amount of air pollutants discharged into the atmosphere during a year or some other time period. This morning, Karen Thorne, Industrial Permitting Supervisor, and Industrial Permitting Engineer Chris Gerstle, who helped manage the Emissions Analysis Section point sources, will be sharing a presentation on the district's point source emissions inventory and EPA's proposed revisions to the federal emissions reporting rule.
Thank you, Director. I'm Karen Thorne. I'm one of the Industrial Permitting Supervisors here at the district, and I'm going to talk to you today about ABCD's point source emission inventory and EPA's proposed air emissions reporting requirement revisions. And I'm going to go through this a little quickly this morning in the interest of time, but I want to let you know that the slides will be available after today's meeting, so you can go back and look at them. Okay, so the U.S. EPA requires states, local, state, local, and tribal agencies to report air emissions from point sources, non-point sources, on-road and non-road sources, and fires every three years. And what I'm going to talk about today is the point source inventory. So it's a detailed estimate of emissions that we provide to EPA that includes stationary sources that are permitted by the district. This does not include mobile sources. And this data is published by EPA every three years. So I want to take a minute to compare EPA's regulation with our ABCD Regulation 1.06. So as I was saying, EPA requires this data to be reported every three years for all sources except for very large sources. Now, in our regulation, we require sources to report this data annually. Both the district and EPA require criteria pollutants to be reported, except we go a step further, and we require hazardous air pollutants and toxic air contaminants to be reported as well. In our regulation, we specify that emissions from startup, shutdown, and malfunction should be reported. The EPA is silent on this. Both the EPA and the district specify specific emission calculation methodologies that should be used. So for example, if a company has done a stat test, they need to use that stat test value to report their emissions. If the emissions are based upon the amount of natural gas combusted, they need to report to us the actual amount of natural gas that was combusted during that year. So I have the emission inventory. So we use it as a compliance tool to determine if companies are in compliance with their permitted emission limits. The EPA uses it in national regulatory development and assessment of risk. They also use it for other planning efforts, such as the state implementation plans and regional base planning. And one of the other big things that EPA wants to use this data for is to make emissions data available to the public. So they do this every three years, and you can reach this on our website. The link is there. I've just included a quick snapshot. This is the data from 2020 for VOC emissions from our, from the sources that report to us. Okay, so who reports? So this regulation is, requires facilities to report that have potential emissions greater than 100 tons. So basically, if you have potential emissions greater than any of, than, greater than 100 tons for any of these pollutants, you have to report, and you have to report your emissions of all of these pollutants. And as I was saying earlier, we require hazardous air pollutants and toxic air contaminants to be reported as well. So they would need to report them. So they would need to report those as well. The NEI also requires facilities with actual lead emissions over a half a ton to report. It's pretty uncommon these days, and we don't have any of those facilities in the world. Just to give you an idea of who reports. So for the 2022 inventory year, we had thirty-six facilities report to us. Thirty-two of these were Title V facilities, and four of them were distilleries. To give you an idea of where these facilities are located, there's a map. The little inset shows the facilities in Rubber Town. So we're still reviewing the 2022 emissions estimates that were reported to us. So to give you an idea of the scale of emissions that we're looking at, these are the emissions from 2021. As you can see, NOx and VOC are the largest criteria pollutant emissions that are reported to us. VOC is sitting at about, I think, sixty-seven hundred tons, to give you an idea of the scale. So how are these emissions reported to us? So we use a third-party cloud-based software package called SLICE, that stands for State and Local Emissions Inventory System, to annually, facilities use this package to annually submit their data to us. This is due to us by April fifteenth each year. And Chris is going to give a demonstration of the SLICE program.
Hi, everybody. I'm just going to briefly say we've come a long way. When I first started, it was all based on paper forms that companies would submit. And then we would review those paper forms, and we'd fill out a different paper form, and hand it to somebody, and we'd type it in, and it would get sent to EPA. That was just kind of a weird, weird process. And then eventually, we developed our own database internally, which smoothed things out a little bit, but we still had to enter all the data in. And at the end of the year, sometimes we'd be scrambling because something wouldn't quite work, we wouldn't forget. But fortunately, we found SLICE, which we learned about this service. We've been using it for several years. And it was vastly smoother than process. Just flip over to, here is SLICE homepage. You can go onto the website. Show, you know, what consists of the complete signal, what you expect companies to send in, how they access SLICE, and what it takes for them to get an account, and then some supporting documentation. How to use SLICE? Some of the code tables that are very important if you're trying to break new processes and understand what it takes to build this database. So I'm going to head over to, when we first transitioned to SLICE, I made this little big company to kind of train the district staff and companies, consultants, and stuff like that. What, what, what is this? Because in the past, they've just been submitting stuff to us, and it just kind of links somewhere. And they didn't really understand that why are we asking for this data? Why would we do this? And so now, they actually see the house that we built. That's how we describe SLICE, the database. You know, each facility is a house. And in this house, it's different rooms. You know, admission units, kind of the room, and the process is, you know, the stove and the microwave or something like that. And then the release points are like, you know, the chenilles and the vents, the windows you might have in your house. Control device, not really. So that's where it kind of falls apart a little bit. But that's kind of a way that we kind of describe formally why we're doing it. So for this little facility I'm talking about, I'll start with the release points. So again, it's just something I just totally made up to help companies understand what we're doing here. So, you know, you can have fugitive release point, you know, stack, which is traditional, what people think about, the smoke stack, but it could be, you know, different type of vents. So all these, you know, gooseneck, horizontal, these are different ways that emissions are vented. And that information can be used in models and things like that to describe, how, how we describe these emissions. So here, for instance, I just picked the boiler stack. And, you know, these are the parameters that we require from the company. How tall is the stack? What shape is the stack? You know, its diameter, temperature, flow rate, things like that. This depends on, and then since this is a database, it's nice that SLICE keeps track of where everything is. So in this case, this release point is associated with the boiler. That's this right there. Another important thing that we get from companies is the actual location of the stacks. And do a deep verify, latitude, longitude. Over the years, we've found stacks in the river or in Indiana and stuff like that. I've got what the company has sent out. Give me the correct stack. So pretty sure, pretty confident that we've got the latitude, longitude right there. Page here, and I'll take a quick look at the control devices. So, you know, there's dozens of different control devices that a facility could have. In this case, you know, I made up a little baghouse or fabric filter, oxidizer, scrubber, things like that. And just take a look at, you know, like, so, you know, this is the north baghouse. And so each control device lists what? Pollution controls. In this case, you know, control the particulate matter, you know, ninety-eight percent efficiency. Again, SLICE shows us, you know, where it says baghouse connected. The main thing that I spend most of my time reviewing is the process emissions. And those are sort of a meat and potato of SLICE. That is what gets updated each year by the company. So, you know, here's the different processes. It has a boiler, and a crusher, a paint booth, a tank, and stuff like that. So let's take a quick look at the boiler. So they, the companies have to report their monthly throughput of natural, so this is the boiler, this is the natural gas boiler. So, you know, they get their LGE bill or however they track how much natural gas they're using each month. And then so it's time for them to report. These numbers will always blank. They'll go in, they'll enter, you know, they want to do it twelve months. And something else that we ask for are the actual hours that it operates. Because sometimes emissions are calculated based upon that. Who's been doing the process operated at. And then the third tab is the emissions tab. So we know this is the main one. A lot of review on this one. In this case, since this was a natural gas process, EPA has developed what are called emission factors. So based upon tests, or maybe many years of analysis, they've determined, you know, for instance, ammonia right here has an emission factor of three point two pounds per cubic feet. And one of the nifty things about SLICE is that if you put in an emission factor in there, it will calculate the emissions based upon, you know, the throughput that you put in on the other page. Now, that's nice and all, but I'd say maybe ten percent of the actual emissions in SLICE are based upon emission factors. Most of the things are based upon other tags, like, for instance, material balance. So I'll pop over. I'll put this paint booth right here. They reported their monthly usage of paint. But, you know, they kind of lumped it all together. So, you know, one hundred fifteen is that, you know, the paint. Could be primer, it could be thinner, it could be all these different things. It's, you know, way more trouble than it's worth to report the individual types of paint and stuff like that. So they will report the total throughput, and then emissions will be the calculation method of material balance. And, you know, I will, they typed in, you know, VOCs. They'd say they need five, five tons of VOC. So this is kind of the final snapshot of their emissions. You know, they entered in the stuff that was required, the throughput and emissions. But one of the key parts of the process is the report tab. So they'll usually report, or, I mean, they will have a spreadsheet that they use to calculate their emissions. So all the background data, you know, in that spreadsheet, they, they list, you know, this much, this type of paint, this much of that type of paint, this has this much HAP, this has this much VOC. And so that's the majority of my time spent reviewing those signals that, you know, it's like, they're, I'm sorry. The background calculations, how, how, where, where all this stuff comes from. So that's the main part of my review is that. So like I say, I'll just receive the final product after several reviews to try to make sure we're reporting the most accurate information about rules, air emissions. EPA, and even EPA looks at it again. They'll do a review, and, you know, they'll make sure that what we reported makes sense. All I have for SLICE.
Chris, what's SLICE saying for again?
The state and local emissions inventory system.
So as you can see, we do a lot of review of this data that companies submit to us. Pretty sure all thirty-six companies know Chris by name. Probably know his phone number by heart as well. So he spends a great deal of his time from April fifteenth until the emissions are due to EPA. By December thirty-first, he spends a great deal of time reviewing that data. We also involve our compliance engineers and our permit engineers in review of the data, too, for a QA check. So as Rachel was saying, EPA proposed a rulemaking back in August. Comments are due in October. And this is a big change to the emission inventory. They're actually proposing a lot of changes to the program. They, they think that this is going to be out by June of next year, and the changes will occur in the 2026 inventory year, so 2026 calendar year, to be submitted in 2027. Just going to spend a few moments going over some of the major changes in the rulemaking. I will say that we're not that concerned about the rulemaking because we're already doing a lot of the things that EPA is proposing to require. One of the biggest things that they want is to make data available to the public quicker. Right now, it's released on a three-year cycle. And, you know, I was saying that we report the data to EPA in December. It takes them a lot of time to QA that data, to release. It takes a lot of time to release that data to the public. So they're proposing to require emissions to be submitted annually instead of, instead of every three years. And they're also going to require half emissions to be reported, which currently, that's optional. They do have a proposed approved process for states and locals to submit half on behalf of the facilities. That's kind of unusual. We don't know how that's going to play out. One of the other big changes to the rule that will impact us is they're lowering the threshold for some hazardous air pollutants, which will require reporting for non-major sources. That's a big change, because currently, it only applies to major sources. And some sources may not even, they have to report. The other thing that they're going to do is tighten deadlines for reporting. So by the year 2030, we're going to have to submit our report to anybody end of May as opposed to the end of December. So that may likely result in us changing our regulation to have companies submit to us quicker so that we can get that data turned around to EPA in a timely manner. They're also requiring more detailed data. A lot of that, we already report. As Chris was showing you, things like the location of release points. That's something that EPA has always wanted, but never required. We already report that, so we're, we're, we're not worried about that. There are other changes to the regulation, but we're not as concerned with those. Those were the biggest. But please, I've included our contact information here if you have any questions, or if you have any questions today.
It's a lot of, a lot of reporting within what's happening to the data that gets reported.
So EPA does release the data now. It's on a three-year cycle.
But that's just public information.
Yes. Now, we do release it on our website as well. That, that map I was showing you, you can toggle that to show different pollutants and see kind of the scale of emissions. I don't think EPA has a tool like that for that.
Does it affect permit conditions or monitoring requirements?
So stepping back to our EPA's use of it. That data is used for state implementation plan, planning purposes. It's used in regional base planning. It's also used in risk assessments. So we see it in a wide variety of uses across EPA's work. In our own work, it is across the agency. It's not merely an exercise. It's one that's used to set up the permit terms and conditions so that we are able to understand what the commissions will be. I'll jump in here to Steve, too. And then it's what we use at the end of that year to evaluate clients as well. So, yeah, Steve, Karen.
You know, like we're on attainment account for ozone. It's planned for reductions to get to attainment. You'll pull those inventories. Also for change in for the future years, try to anticipate. Without a bike, I'm not sure what you can do.
Yeah, they also, sorry, no, they also use it for base planning, which is something I don't know a lot about, but I know that they look at the emissions from the different regional areas.
We do charge a fee for coming to our Title V companies that helps support that type of program.
So Steve, with respect to point sources, which is what we're talking about today. The national emissions inventory includes all sources of emissions. So mobile sources, on-road, non-road, boats, planes, trains, anthropogenic sources, so contribution from biological material chains, are estimated in that case. The refinements that Karen mentioned today, particularly in looking at those smaller sources, EPA having that inventory with precision using estimate to fill in those emissions. We see that quite often with area and sources. They're just a grouping. And then there's various to do that work. So this is one little piece of that emissions inventory process.
Yeah, one thing that I am excited about is now that hazardous air pollution reporting will be required. They use a lot of estimates to see what risk is across the country. So that'll help to refine that because we'll know exactly what latitude and longitude that hazardous air pollution is being released from. So it'll be a great refinement of the data.
I have one question. How is fugitive emissions not included in that point source? How do we look at fugitive emissions?
They are included. Fugitive emissions from the point source.
From the point source.
Those are included, yes. But like, mobile vehicles, those are included in the non-point version. Or version, but, I guess version. Because it all gets summed together.
Well. Karen, what do you think about that? Given the, the, the number of new non-major sources that will be included in this, as well as other sources that are mobile possibly as well, have you contemplated the labor impacts that that would be for the district?
No, we have not. We're kind of waiting to see how the final rule plays out. Now, the mobile sources, we don't, you know, that won't change. That part won't change for us. It's just the smaller point sources of hazardous air pollutants that will be increased. Yeah, there are a lot of pollutants that they've lowered the threshold for. So, yeah, we're going to see how that plays out.
Does the rule address mobile sources?
It does on the non-point. So it's non-road, on-road, and non-point sources. And those are all done with modeling. So those are more estimates fans getting specific data. I mean, they use specific, that's kind of confusing, because they use specific data, but it's not the specific emissions data. It'd be like the number of cars on the road, for example. That's it.
Frank Butler is another member of our emissions inventory team. He does that mobile source modeling for us. It does use very specific, detailed information as the input. And then a model that looks at a wide variety of fuels, fuel types, vehicle usage, and so on.
I'll also point out, it's a pretty big jump for a lot of those facilities that will now be brought into this who haven't done it in the past to have an understanding of what you emit and how to calculate that. So we'll be here to assist them, but that is a real challenge.
You got an idea how many of those facilities there are?
No. EPA has quantified that in the rule. I don't remember the number, but. And I do want to say for small businesses, if you're below a certain threshold, you can be qualified as a small business. And the reporting will be a lot easier for you. For, as a small business, they do not have to report by each release point, each process. It's going to be like a facility number. EPA has said that they're going to roll out some kind of software packages that these smaller facilities can use. They haven't given a lot of detail about that, but.
An opportunity for our small business assistance program to provide some outreach. And hopefully, those aids that EPA develops will be very helpful and easy to use. So we'll have our fingers crossed. But once the rule is finalized, seeing what we'll need for staffing will be an important evaluation.
Good job. Increase needs to be like metro to increase your budget.
Well, you know, we can do a little bit of self-help here. We have a wide variety of financial support for the district. We have a small percent we receive from the general fund. It's about ten percent. We get another twelve percent or so from EPA in operational grants. Another small portion for our one oh, I'm sorry, under senior act section one oh three for our particulate matter monitoring. And then the rest comes from our permit program and emissions fees. So as we evaluate that, it's quite likely we may need to evaluate Reg 208, which is our fee reg, and bring that back to the board to increase those fees.
Include penalties?
Penalties are set by KRS seventy-seven point nine nine oh. So they are limited by statute.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank both Karen and Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank both Karen and Chris for an excellent presentation on the emissions inventory, if you're interested. Any other questions from board members?
I'm going to go back a little bit to the situation with the odor issue, is this a coordinated approach with MSD about how these are getting addressed in a way that's different than it was in the past?
I believe that our hope had been that the, in the past, ABCD and MSD used the same complaint service report system called Hanson. And because we were connected, we could see each other's reports in relation to a specific claim. When Metro decided to go to Acela, we lost that insight. And so our hope had been that the odor complaint log, much like our own community compliance report to the board, would help us and the community see how MSD was responding to these complaints. There seems to be a disconnect in terms of what's reported, it seems to be limited to their customer service office perhaps only. So I'd like to explore how they respond to smell my city report, to track those and respond to the public. Our compliance officers have in the past responded to plaintiffs who've left us their contact information. Not everyone does, we do accept anonymous complaints and respond to those as if they were treated equally to those where we have contact information.
So there are some ongoing communications to improve that?
Yes.
Any other question? Thank you. Moving right on, the next thing on the agenda is our quality datum. Board members have received the our quality data electronically. Are there any questions? I see we have, I always had, what, three, I see this is for ozone.
Have there been any insight from the beds on how they're going to address the wildfire impact if you're?
Communities that have impacts from wildfire-derived smoke, it's understanding, following our meeting with EPA last month, that not only will we need to do an exceptional event demonstration for ozone, but as we look at a revised particulate matter standard that state and locals, we also need to do a separate exceptional event demonstration to account for that particulate matter data that's attributable to those Canadian wildfires.
No idea what that number is going to be on. Take a minute. So for me?
Those were some quite exceptional, we need 2.5 concentrations.
They were.
I mean, what, this is an unusual year for the board, that doesn't continue, because that would make that regulation, if it falls down, very difficult to meet.
I'm hoping that we don't see another summer like we did last year. Previously, we've seen impacts from western wildfires in Arizona and California. This is our first widespread Canadian wildfire event. However, they have a fire season that runs from May through October, so it is possible we could see another event. I will say that they are trying to use some advanced sensors now, not only, as we've seen EPA adopt purple air sensors, particularly given the experience in California and Arizona, to help forecast air quality impacts, that they are now trying to use sensors in a way in Canada to be supplements to fire watchers. But they're not in place to detect air quality impacts from people or property, but in order to see that a fire has started in a wildlife area, that they may not be able to see it. So I think that we'll see some interesting things come out, because they deploy some sensors throughout the area, and hopefully, they may be able to step in before those fires reach the level that they were this year. I do have concerns that we are going to see more widespread fire events due to climate change. So just keep our fingers crossed that this year is particularly wet and cool.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay, the next report, our toxic reporting question, you mentioned regarding our toxic report. What about the enforcement status report?
It's going to shorten up, so I guess.
Yeah. Access emission report. Question on that. The complaint, investigation status summary. This is interesting, this status summary, it's some things that go off. It's interesting. Was there any question from board members regarding any of these reports? I will now adjourn the meeting. The next board meeting is Wednesday, October 18th, 2:00 AM, 7:00 Eastern.